Ray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
This is our own.
Will you just give me a second?
Your second's up.
Okay, uh, let me write that down. Craig Scott.
I'm here.
Mark Serbrook.
President.
Ron Vaughn.
President Biden.
Brad Newbecker.
Here.
Jenny David.
Here. Any additions or corrections to the agenda, Commissioners?
We, uh, we put on discussion of a position in the Administrator's Office as a Secretary.
Under where? This discussion items?
New discussion items.
So that would be I?
I.
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 Right, Secretary of Administrator's Office?
You want to make that J. I throw a late item on here.
IJ.
Oh, which, what's I?
I is the Community Corrections Grant.
Oh, I guess I didn't. Am I told you not to do that?
I literally just printed these.
Okay, so that's gonna be J.
All right, so J is the Admin Secretary and I is?
Community Corrections Grant. Anything else?
I'd make a motion that we adapt the agenda with additions.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook.
I support.
Commissioner Newbecker, on favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, public comment. Did Tom, did he report this yet? He was going to.
I don't know.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this the first time and then I don't feel like I need to the second time. Pardon me?
Are you really?
Yep. On December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 2077 to adapt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A separate second public comment period is reserved for public statements on any manner or issue that is relevant and germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the Board are required to comply with the following: one, state your name for the record; two, speak only to the chairperson; three, stand behind the podium when speaking; four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer; and five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manners, however, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The Board Chairperson reserves the right to sound like a devil when the audience applauds or drives a speaker. The Board thanks you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment in that room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment. Item three, appointments. We have Maria.
Kiranen.
Kiranen and John. Robichard. This is related to the Board of Canvassers. Do you want to come on up?
Sure.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Your application was on here. Did anybody have, did you, did you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Maria Kiranen. Um, I just moved up here like two years ago after I retired. We've had a cottage up here since 2012 and I was really involved in civic work where I used to live. And since I've retired from the schools, I looked for a pathway to kind of continue doing that. And so I got certified as an election inspector and I really enjoyed it. It was nice to be part of that process. It was something that I had never really done before. And so when Dwight from the Republican Party asked me if I would apply for this, I was happy to do so.
The Republican Party? I read your application and it looks like you certified election worker.
Yes.
And then a resume is here too.
Yes, just like a short blurb, just kind of, this is me.
Any questions?
There's two, two Republican openings and one Democrat?
There's two Republican, one Democrat. The Democrat.
I'm glad, the way you said it.
I know it's, I know.
Democrats already filled, right?
That's, she's continuing.
There's one already continuing.
Correct. And then you guys chose the, the last one.
Christine.
Christine Troyer was here once.
Correct.
Correct.
So.
We didn't vote on that.
No, she's one of three.
She's one of three.
One of three.
And we have to pick you.
Right.
And then John's on Zoom.
John is the Republican.
He's the other Republican, yeah.
Do we have a Democratic contender?
There's not a spot.
She is continuing.
Yeah, but there are two Democratic.
No.
Isn't there two Democrats and two Republicans?
On the board, there's two Democrats, two Republicans.
Yes.
One Democrat thought was open because her term was up. She wants to continue her term.
So there's no vacancies.
So there's no vacancies.
Okay.
There we go.
That was a lot of confusion, wasn't it?
No, no, I got it.
I don't, I don't have, but read everything.
John, you're on Zoom. Did you want to add? Did you want to tell us about yourself? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Hi, I'm John Robichard. I'm a Ogumah County, West Branch resident. I live over on Lake Ogumah. Just interested in being a canvasser. Thought I'd have some way to contribute and give back and learn more about Ogumah County politics and government.
How long have you been a resident of Ogumah County?
Since 2006, so 15 years.
Any questions for John, guys? I read your, I read your application. I didn't say, I didn't say a whole lot.
Process? Do you have experience in the election process?
No, I don't have any experience in the election process.
Have you held any public office?
No, I have not.
Run for any public office?
Not yet. No.
That's a fair answer, yeah, okay.
I've thought about it, but not yet, no. Just trying to get started.
Any other questions for John?
Been involved in any public business, uh, an appointment or anything like that?
I've been employed for 40 years.
I mean, publicly, for municipal, any immediate appointment or anything like that?
Uh, no. I mean, I'm a Vice Chairman of the Republican Party with Dwight.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I don't have anything.
Okay, guys, do you want to, is there any nominations for, we have to make two decisions. We have three names. We've heard from all three now.
Well, I'll nominate, I'll make nomination with Maria and Christina.
It's Kristen, right?
Kristen.
Christine.
Christine. It's Troyer.
It's like movie.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker to nominate Maria and Christine. Is there any discussion? Well, I guess I'm not making a motion, am I? Gosh. Is there any discussion on this? So we'll put this ad for?
I guess my thing is, it's not a motion, but to prepare a motion, a resolution, so.
Any further discussion? Any questions for us?
Um, can, what is all involved in, in what are, what would be my responsibilities be as somebody that's on the Board of Canvassers?
She had to explain that to you.
List of responsibilities. Is there training involved? So you, you will know what you're doing before you begin, yes.
Okay.
Um, we are having a November election for Good Art Township.
Okay.
So basically, after the election, the township officials bring in their election material.
Stuff that I would have.
Yeah, yeah. And then usually the two days after the election.
Okay.
The Board of Canvassers come in and basically we open everything up, double check, make sure.
Chain of custody and all the poll books are correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, any recounts?
Recounts and then curing ballots too. We do that also?
We, yeah, there's, I will get you, actually I can email it.
Okay.
To you.
Okay.
What's all involved in it.
And so like, what is the timeframe involved in, like, as far?
Whenever there's an election or a recall.
Okay. Okay.
Hopefully only two or three times a year.
Okay.
Just usually a day or two.
Okay, and that's normally November or August?
May, August, November.
May, August, November, okay.
Although the August may change.
Okay.
But as of, as of next year, it's.
Yeah, because we do go south for a period of time over the winter, so just, I would want to make sure that, before I would take something like this, that I would be here to do exactly what you want me to do.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's the November election.
Okay.
And like I said, it's usually two days after the election.
Okay.
Takes a day or two. It just depends. But then if there is a recount.
Right.
It's in there.
That, yeah, it's. If, if you can be here the whole month of November.
I can be here the whole month of November.
Fine, yeah. And you would know, okay.
April.
May.
Schools, schools. Have a presidential. Primary in April.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Primary.
Yeah.
Of course, that's only every four years.
Okay. Now.
We have a week to bail out at this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, do you want to? Right, so if, um, like it's in February, um, if for some reason I couldn't do it, would that be like a huge problem? Is there like a way to substitute somebody in or is it?
The last one we did, we Dwight stood in.
Okay. There's, I just want to, I'm just being super cautious.
Yeah, in that case, I'm sure.
Okay.
Be willing to sit in.
Okay. Yeah, because like I said, I don't see a reason why I couldn't, but, you know, just, just in case. Do you have the contact, Breck's contacts, contact so you can reach out to her if you have any questions?
Yes, I have her email.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Is there a way we can also nominate an alternate?
Is there an alternate? Other than the clerk? What is, or is it the?
No, it's the head, the.
Chairman of the, of a party, party chairman.
I guess what I'm saying is if she couldn't make it, would have John?
It's the, no, it's the party head, the party chair.
Party chair has to do it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions, reach out to Breck.
Okay.
I will get you, I'll give you information. I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
So you have a better idea.
Awesome. Sounds good. It's just that, like you said, sometimes we'll go south for a while for the winter and I didn't want to run into a problem. I can't see a reason why I couldn't get back here for that, but I'm, after, I mean, you can see my resume after building programs and running programs, I have like 50 redundancies when I do stuff just to make sure that if I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it, you know? We appreciate that. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure to go. Include all dates probable for.
For A, we got the lease agreement and property purchase.
Commissioner Serbrook and I met with both Kelly and Kevin about the proposal they had for purchasing the property. I believe it's lot number four with the brown storage building on it. We subsequently had another discussion with Kelly about the lease that she has on parcel nine. I might have my numbers mixed up.
I think. I have the map.
Excellent. And that's, that's the parking lot that's right in front of the business that she owns and right behind our day treatment facility.
Nine is the one with the shed and forest little parking lot.
Okay, so we subsequently were able to follow up with our county attorney Greg Meehan about the situation. His suggestion was this, that at the meeting next week, if the Board were agreeable, we enter into leases for both of those parcels. So the parcel with the building on it would be a lease with both Kelly and Kevin and then we already have a lease on the other parcel with Kelly. And incorporate into the lease the option to purchase. And according to Greg, this would be the cleanest way for us to make this transaction happen. In the meantime, we can have the properties appraised to make sure that we're getting a fair price. I'm very confident that what they've offered is already fair, but I think for due diligence, we'll want to confirm that from our end. And then just move forward. So we would approve the lease agreements next meeting, whenever you're comfortable doing that, which likely will be pretty much the lease you've already seen with some of the modifications that Greg recommended in terms of insurance coverage and so on. And incorporate that option to purchase. And then when they're ready to exercise that option, they come back, we execute it and we're done.
So with that lease agreement, and Greg had talked about insurance, is, is that going to cost us in having that liability on that parcel? Is that going to cost us more money?
No. What will happen with the, the insurance is they'll be required to have, I believe he said $5 million worth of coverage and then the county would be named as a separate co-insured strictly their policy. We are out of pocket nothing for any of those transactions. So they would purchase that or the, you know, time period that they're leasing it, which I expect will be relatively short. But that way we're covered and we're certain that they'll have enough coverage, you know, for any accident or damage that might occur on those properties while they're leasing it.
So now we're looking at selling two lots.
Right.
Does anybody have anything to say about that? Any, any discussion?
I don't want to sell anything. We have now put in a lot of money into this building across the street. We've had our security person come to us and tell us that there's a possibility that we're going to rearrange our entrance into the building to the front door again. I'm not sure. Him and I talked a little bit today about that situation. If we do, that parking lot across the street is going to be used again much more. When we came in the front door, I always parked across the street. So did a lot of employees. Since we moved to the back, the employees have changed the way they park. They're not parking across the street over there anymore because of the longer walk. You know, I understand property isn't invented anymore, but it does change hands back and forth. I just don't want to sell. I think holding on to it, especially the paved lots, holding on to it is the way. Those lots were ours to start with. However, they constructed their building to, for whatever way their business was, they were our lots. That's the way I like it. You know, I said it in the meeting before, we just want to tear down that, that, see that, that old building gone? I don't like the looks of it either. We have storage place for it. I wouldn't mind tearing it down and making a nice grassy lot out of it. But, and everybody can look at it, just like they say they're going to take the lot down and make it nice and grassy to look at. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at. I don't want to, I don't want to sell anything. We're not going to make a huge amount of money about, with it. It's not going to pay our bills or not, or anything else. It's, it's just a, really, for what little bit of money we're going to get worth it, drop in the bucket.
Commissioner Serbrook?
I think Craig brings up a very valid point. It's that front entrance, if we start utilizing our front entrance again, we very well need that parking space. Like that's something I hadn't thought about. And, um, I'm also wondering with, once the day treatment center gets open, if there's going to be, if they're going to end up utilizing some of that themselves as well. And I guess that's a question for, once it gets open. So I think probably at this point in time, you know, I don't have a, a big problem with selling up nine. But I think that, like I said, Commissioner Scott's got a very valid point. That's, that we should probably hold off on four for now and see what develops. I mean, we can always go back to them and say, you know, we're interested in selling it if we don't have, if it's not utilized. But if we find ourselves in a situation where we need to utilize it and all of a sudden we don't have it, shame on us.
How big's a lot? How many parking spots is a lot? I don't know.
Do you want me to show you this?
I've seen it, but.
You can get an idea because there's some cars here.
Our agreement said that we.
You know, you've got some vehicles here and it's.
So it's decent size. Okay. Mr. Vaughn, are you on the phone?
We haven't stayed parked on it.
Yeah, my, my opinion, if you got me.
Yep.
Okay. I, I would personally like to see that building come out of there. Um, it, as far as selling it, Craig's got a very, uh, that's a very good reason. You got that center going in over there and possibly moving the, the front entrance. So I think for right now, like he says, we, we need to keep it.
Commissioner Newbecker?
Now, I'm fine with selling it, but I guess I'm questioning what, what this discussion is about changing the front entrance and who's making that determination.
I don't know. I talked to Chris. Um, we mentioned the machine, the, the x-ray machine, it's not as wide as we figured and everything else. I hate to see it. I like, I like the back entrance myself. I really do. Maybe we could make the front a different manner, but I don't know. If it doesn't work out and it has, it, it, it ends up being changed, I, I just reserve. You know, and then, but what, I guess, you know, it's just like, like that, like the day treatment center. I mean, who's to say that we don't add on to that, go west with an addition on to that for another office or something at a later date? The infrastructure of the building is there, you know? If we were to do that, we may utilize more parking, you know? I don't know, you know?
Oh, of course. The issue with the back entrance with that x-ray machine, it's wider than that table is back there now. The question is, can wheelchairs get either side of it? We talked about rolling it down there earlier today, just to, as kind of, and they've got a wheelchair here just to kind of do a test fit, but we were in between contract negotiations and by the time we got to that point, it was time to re-meet with another group. So we had a chance to really do that, but we took, took some rough measurements and kicked the can around a little bit about it, but.
He brought it to us last, the head of security brought it to us last time.
I was just, I didn't care about it before that and, you know, we, I guess they pretty much already decided to get it.
It was free.
It was free, so they grabbed it.
Yes, I'm wondering if that's maybe something, do we really need an x-ray machine at the bottom of, on the bottom floor? Or could that possibly be put up at the top of the stairs going into the courts?
Well, just make it a lot more convenient for security guys is to have everybody put their stuff on there. It's like you're going through the airport. Everything out, it goes through and.
I, I understand that, but.
Instead of digging through purses and briefcases and that kind of stuff, maybe get some private stations.
How's parking now?
People parking across the street and coming to the front door just is not very convenient to begin with. So I like the back door. I'd like to find a way that we could keep the x-ray machine and keep the back entrance.
Well, not to go into the x-ray too much. Anyway, we did do some measurements and a wheelchair will fit both sides because a wheelchair can't fit through the, uh, the detector right now.
They've got one of the, the wide wheelchairs that wouldn't.
How's parking now?
Okay, well, they, they said that the wheelchair fitted through the detector and the other side is wider. The, right now, it's, the issue really is, can the operator, can the operator of the machine operate it from the center of the aisle rather than stand over where the exit of, the exit aisle is? We don't know for sure. We're going to take a look at it. They're going, they're going to look.
We don't get into it.
I'm not involved. I'm not really involved in it except.
Question that I asked.
I asked a question, that's all.
Yeah, the question that I asked him was, how come we didn't, we haven't discussed this in the Security Committee meeting before we brought it to the Board, I guess.
Oh, well, we're just, it sounds like a, a security thing.
It, it does, but we're, Mark and I were down there in between two negotiation things and we were a couple of nose of commission or something. And we started asking questions, you know?
I need to find you guys a job.
I could have went, I could have went down to Tim's office and drank coffee, but other commissioners don't like me doing that. Now, there are commissioners don't like to talk and.
Let's, I asked him a question. Let's get on task and let's go ahead.
Pretty much stay out of here.
Commissioner Scott, hang on, please.
Question concerned, the, the parking situation as it exists today. And there have been a few days this summer when there was a high-profile trial going on. The parking was definitely at a premium when they were selecting a jury, but those were very few days. And there weren't many, and I don't think it's by and large, people who have business here have much trouble finding parking other than those few days, and we're going to have those. You just can't predict them, that's all. So right now, we're, we're fine. Good point made though on the day treatment. If we do head onto the building, I'd like to get this project done first, but.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there may be more demand for parking there on site. So, you know, it's, it's a good point. Although there is quite a bit of parking on the side, south side of the building right now. But I have no idea what we'll be looking at five years from now. It might be so successful that we want to go up even.
Right, because the nearest one is Alpena. They just started this very similar program and then Midland. So this could definitely, Commissioner Scott, this could definitely grow and expand. So what's your advice?
Well, just hearing the conversation, then I'll bring back the lease, about the purchase option for that. Four, or is it nine? The one with the parking lot?
Four.
Four is four. Now with nine, there really isn't anything to lease. I mean, I don't think there'd be any reason for anybody to lease it if we're not going to sell it eventually. We could certainly start looking into demolition costs for the building and take care of that issue. But I don't know that you need to entertain a lease for the property to sport to be vacant.
Well, they'd like the least of these grassy lot.
I know Kelly had talked about needing to improve drainage in the area, which mostly for the winter time when the snow is stored there and it starts to melt, they'd like it to go down into the drain rather than into the parking lot forming ice.
Is, is parcel four being used currently? Is she utilizing that for parking or for?
The parking, yeah. That's, that's why she has the lease.
That's the original lease.
So, so she is currently utilizing that for her business?
Right.
So are we looking at charging if we choose to not sell that, which we're, it sounds like we're discussing? Are we charging her?
Well, there's something already in the lease that talks about her maintaining that as well, and she's talked about paving it. And if that were to occur, I think we could justify that as, what was the word for it? Appropriate compensation anyway. But we, we will need to, you know, in subsequent years, make sure that that appropriate compensation is built into it. Right now it says zero and as we've learned, zero is not okay through decisions out of the Supreme Court. So there's that component and also the maintenance of the lot. So if she's utilizing it, she'll have to be responsible for snow removal and everything that goes with that. And I think even more importantly, from her perspective and ours, if the parcel is being used for, in our case, a non-government purpose, it's being used by a for-profit business, it now goes on the tax roll and is assessed. So we'll have to make sure that written into that lease is the obligation on Alexa or, you know, on Kelly to make sure that that property is properly reported with the city and is properly put on the tax roll. And then she's responsible for any property tax that would go along with that.
Well, because, I mean, we're charging other entities' lease.
Right, the other entities are public agencies, so they're going to be immune from the tax component to that. This is obviously a for-profit business and that puts it in a whole other category. Probably something that should have happened when the lease was first entered into, but we've got it and we'll make sure it's in the lease moving forward.
So with the new lease agreement, with that line currently saying zero, we don't know what that line is going to say.
Have opportunity to talk about that.
Okay.
So when it comes here, we'll set whatever that number will be and then any other parameters that you want to see included.
Well, I was here when we wrote the agreement. We shared the cost fifty-fifty on, on, uh, seal coating that parking lot. And all of number four is paid, so there's no more paving to be done. We split the cost between Kelly fifty-fifty to, to, uh, seal coat it. The agreement said that she wouldn't take care of the, the snow removal. We have not, our contractors not touched that.
Right.
Her contractor does, or however she gets it. We ask our employees not to park any farther over. Matter of fact, not even on three does, uh, does any of our employees park. And that would be the lot that's west of the, uh, day treatment center, which day treatment center is on number three. So our, our people are parking on one and two, or one and part of two. Um, one and two, I guess. I think that, I don't know if that's a property line or.
That's the, um, that's the drive going in. It goes back there to like Kevin's. This is all Kevin's here, the stoker spot. That's all his.
It sounds like we're all in.
We are on one and two.
It sounds like we're all in agreement at this point in time to just lease lot four and possibly sell lot nine where you said yes to selling lot nine?
I'd be in favor of selling.
That's the one the building's on? Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I don't want to sell.
Commissioner Vaughn?
So.
Want to put that on a resolution?
Also, um, the front lot closest to the, uh, monument, uh, there is some pretty good potholes in that that probably need to be taken care of. But that's, uh, not any of them.
Did we not address the, Tim?
We talked about it.
Okay.
I, I don't know what's happened. I haven't gone over there, so.
Okay. Because I, I took, I, I took pictures of it and stuff after we met with Kelly because she brought that to our attention as well.
Okay.
I went over, took some pictures of it and touched base with Tim and said, you know, we need to get Chris to get some cold patch over there and get those things filled because there are some of them.
On which lot?
Well, it's not the one that she really utilizes, but it's in front of the chel.
Both of the, one and twos.
Before that's up and running, that's got to be fixed.
Definitely.
Now, if you're going to sell nine, I hope that somebody doesn't build something depending on lot four to access it.
I don't think they can build on that. I don't think it's built.
You were going to ask Denise. Have you had contact with Denise as far as?
Any, any splitting they go to, I'll have to be approved by the city first, but then if it is sold and anybody wants to build on it, it's going to be subject to city zoning.
Good, right now it's, it's landlocked.
You're right.
Well, it isn't. No, she owns five and eight. She owns five and eight. She's building on eight right now. Okay, so she can access it going through five to eight to, to nine. If, if they end up splitting that lot, she can ask the city not only to split it, but to join it with eight and form one lot. That's the city has that capability of, of combining lots.
But she's only got so much parking spot. I mean, I, I guess what would?
Well, what I'm saying is if you build and then you, you, you're the original, the way I was told, the original building on five, her, her building was to, was to storefront eighth street. It didn't. It storefronted our lot. Now, she said in a public meeting, she, she planned on buying lot four from us.
Uh, we could deed restricted if we sell it, deed restricted, so there's.
Well, I'm just saying that if you turn around and you build with, with the, the, with the intent that lot four is going to be the front door, or you're going to have to use lot four to get to wherever you put there. I think that the next commission is going to be, have somebody standing there and saying, well, I need lot four to get to my building. Well, you build it that way. That's what she's saying. No, I could, I really need lot four because the way my garage door is, I can't get a long vehicle into it now unless I drive on lot four. Well, that's our lot. It's like your neighbor building a garage saying, well, I gotta wait and get into your garage. I gotta drive through your driveway to get there.
We're leasing that lot four, so she can utilize that.
Okay, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, like I say, your neighbor builds, builds a garage that at you at, you have to drive through, in order to get a big vehicle in it, have to drive through your yard to get there. And after the fact, well, hey, I got to drive through your yard to get to my garage. I mean, hey, that's the way the garage is. You gotta let me drive through your yard because I can't get anything in the garage unless.
So two choices, not sell it or B, sell it with a deed restriction that says no building or no development whatsoever, you know.
Able to use it if I have.
We know you don't want to sell.
That, that's all. I'm just one bolt.
I understand that. So I guess what regression I'll be behind to put, uh, in the deed that you can't build on it.
Well, just to address Commissioner Craig's concerns, uh, just to make sure that there's no building that will go on there that will cause an egress problem across our lot or.
I understand what you're saying. But currently we're leasing that parcel, so. Okay. I think we had enough to put it on for resolution for lot nine, correct? Okay. Uh, item C ORV ordinance, nope, sorry, building and grounds procurement card.
Oh, you asked Chris to be here. I asked him to be here, but then we moved the meeting dates. We may have had a conflict tonight. We could move him to the next meeting hall.
Perfect.
He's, he's, I've talked to him. I know he. I was gonna say, I, I know what his issue was.
Right, but we asked him to come here.
Exactly.
So we'll put him on for the next committee of the hall because some others may have some questions for him. Item C ORV ordinance.
No update.
Okay, we'll put that on for next time as well.
What we said we do.
Item D, electronic time card.
Tracy is here. I know Tom is on Zoom as well. Uh, so Tracy, you want to come up? Tracy is, uh, probably the most expertise on the user end of this proposal. Tom, of course, is, has the expertise on the technical end. I'm just sort of a go-between. Uh, said in the meeting on the electronic time card. This is, uh, a product that was, uh, suggested to us through BSNA. Now BSNA already has an electronic time card module, but they, uh, were very upfront with us and saying it is limited and, and it is, it's a little more than what we do now on paper. Just, I think still go to Tracy and the clerk's office and she still has to manipulate everything to make sure everybody's paid out of the right fund and the right amounts on time. Um, what the Andrews Technology System does is takes that to the next step and believe me, it's a huge, um, improvement over what BSNA does. We have, for instance, uh, sheriff deputies who might be working, uh, um, at one point, uh, small school resource officer, or they may be working out of the road patrol fund, or they may be working out of any of the other activities the sheriff has that are maybe tied to grants or dedicated funds. But this system will allow us with a deputy, when he does his time card, to tell us what he was doing. Hit the right button and everything will be automatically calculated. So if there's overtime involved, if there's shift differential involved, if there's, uh, training officer, money's involved, any other kind of premium, it will all be recorded upfront, but then go to the department head or supervisor for approval, and there can be more than one approval in there if we'd like. Eventually, when it gets to Tracy, it comes already sorted. So all the hours are accounted for in the proper fund. Any premium pay is calculated. Uh, any other, um, uh, aspect in terms of our accounting is done. She doesn't have to re-enter anything. And not only does that save time, but it also saves a tremendous amount of opportunity for error. So if somebody's having to re-enter, recalculate something, every time that document is touched, there's a chance for an error. This eliminates it as best as we can right upfront. Uh, it's a very flexible system. It also has what we, literally an electronic time card component to it. Uh, the proposal that, uh, Tom had drawn up would include, uh, time card or time clock in this building and one over at transit. Uh, that's saving only two locations where we have them now. And has the option, if we wanted to, to go to a biometric authentication where the employee literally put their fingerprint on there, then identifies who the employee is and then they punch in. Uh, it also has a component that will take temperature. Uh, I don't think that's necessary. I think that was done by Andrews Technology just in anticipation of selling this as an ARBA item. I don't think we need that. I'm not sure we need the fingerprint component either. I don't know what we decided on with that.
I, I think we went with a lesser one. I mean, they have the option of checking in on their phone. They have to be within so many feet of the central part of the building. So it's not like they just clock in at home and say, oh, you know, they have to be within whatever feet we designate. Um, or you can do it on your desktop when you sit down at your desk.
Uh, another very, very nice feature is that every employee we have on our payroll will be able to log in and know in real time what kind of sick time bank they have, vacation time, uh, that's accrued, uh, just all sorts of other information that they're otherwise calling the clerk's office to get. They'll have it all right at their fingertips.
Or I'm in the middle of payroll and someone tries to use eight and they only have four hours left and then I'm in the middle trying to give, I give them a negative number and then I have to go back and fix it later, take it out of personal, whatever. It, it just, it eliminates, yeah, trying to fix their, their leave time hours.
So Tom, if I've got the latest, um, number in front of me, their proposal was sixteen thousand nine fifty-three. See Tom on there.
Hi, Tom.
Time is something.
Can you hear us? You're muted now.
The sheriff's office is also looking at using this for a scheduling system. They schedule out, what'd they say, three months or so now?
Right.
This has the capability of them scheduling out for up to six if they need to. Anybody can get on there and look to see who's got off, if they're available, you know, like a supervisor and look and see how many people have already requested off. If someone else comes to them and they've already reached their max, they, we know right away they can deny without having to look up on account or whatever. There was just, um, all department heads, that's how they were going to manage, um, requesting time off. And like I said, the sheriff's department was really kind of excited about using it with the scheduling part of it. And they put it on a spreadsheet.
That would make life a lot easier for those guys, I'm sure, because having lived through that.
So you can trail it, I mean.
You know.
Doug and Paul sent in our meeting and were, uh, asking a lot of questions that pertain directly to the, the bill's kind of challenges.
Right.
So why, why would you not put one of these, um, in the sheriff's office and in the corrections for them to? Why would it have to be?
The time clock is only if you don't want to do it off your phone or don't want to do it on the desktop. If you literally want to walk into the time clock room and punch in a number
Okay.
and actually clock in, you have the option of doing it one of, either of those three ways.
Yeah. Which again, uh, what I really liked too was this component with the cell phone. We can fine tune this so that only certain employees, if we want to, can check in on their cell phone. Why would you do that? Well, now maybe you want people coming in and punching in at their desk or in the building. That option's there. It's really nice though, and the option that that was brought up, an example from the clerk's office, sometimes they will leave the building fifteen minutes before closing time because they have to walk papers over to the sheriff's office. Well, rather than having to walk back here and have a chance of being locked out because the doors are locked at four thirty, they have their phone. We say within a radius of a hundred feet of the sheriff's office, you can check out. They can check out from their phone, continue under their car and.
They currently, we just clock out early and write a note on the bottom of our time card that we had to go to the jail or dispatch or whatever. That would eliminate that.
So is this sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-three just a one-time deal and then is there a yearly?
This is, the, the upfront is included with the, with the on-time or with the, uh, ongoing maintenance cost. Uh, again, Tom, I think we're, you're probably going to be clearer now if you speak, but I think that five thousand two thirty-five is, that's the one-time fee. So subtract that from the sixteen thousand and it's probably your annual cost, but I'll let Tom speak to that. It was more, um,
I actually don't have, well, I mean, right at the second, but I thought it was around eight thousand a year, but I can get a for sure quote because isn't there three clocks on there right now? Or is there two?
I think they took off this, this third one when we were in the meeting. I guess I don't know what you have printed.
I'm only seeing two on my sheet. I don't know if my sheet's the most recent.
That, that, that is then because I had them take the clocks off. So that is the most recent quote.
Anything to add to this, Tom?
Um, I'm looking forward to it. I mean, in all honesty, there's employee, there's employers in the area with less than two hundred people that, that we have. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a way of tracking. I mean, the fact of the matter is time cards are going to the wayside. And I love the fact that the scheduling can be done through this. You know, if an employee took a vacation, you don't have to go back through archives all the time. And we asked them about record retention and they said it's at least three years. So, um, you know, we don't.
And we can export into reports once that third year, we can export and we'll still have a paper copy. Or like on a computer, whatever, however we.
Anything to add, guys? I think this is great.
Well, it's, it's great. I'm familiar with a somewhere software, but, um, one thing that we had, uh, some issues with was, uh, controls on, uh, where they were punching in at. So are there some type of, uh, uh, controls on how far away from the building they can be? Um, now they're using their cell phone to do that, that's great, but how, is there, is there any kind of, kind of controls over, uh?
We can set that limit.
Yeah.
And if we find that we can pinpoint it, we can actually pinpoint right on the map where they were when they did it. So if, if we find out that someone's, you know, sitting in their car and punching in and then coming in later and we know we can track it.
You'll at least be able to see that investigated later. So that's, I've already had issues with that already with our system, so.
If I, if I made the.
Now, though, if a person comes checking a bunch of people out in their office.
Yes.
We don't really know if they're in the building, if they left ten minutes ago. So I mean, this, this will save that. Somebody else can.
What kind of identification are we going to have on the phones and desktops?
Tom, was it their employee number or?
Yeah, we could go by employee number and the threshold Brad was a tenth of a mile.
Okay.
That's pretty close.
Anything else, Commissioners? Commissioner Silverk?
Sounds great to me. I'd be fantastic tool.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Sounds excellent to me.
Go ahead and put that on for a resolution, Tim.
And I think they were saying that if by chance we were to get started in mid-November or October, late October, we're looking at a February first implementation. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of time for them to rebuild, you know, they'll have to build their banks and all that.
So does this communicate with the BSNA support? Or does? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
We have to do nothing.
It'll save me about three hours of input time every Monday of payroll because all the department heads should approve everything. And then all I have to do is go into the system and export it out into the, and import it into BSNA and.
Well, this protects us on, on numerous reasons.
Lots of.
And it's just for the audit, the internal audit suggestion with the, you know, the time card checks and all that. So it's definitely.
Thanks, Tracy. Next, we have the Open Meetings Act Remote Participation.
Commissioner Scott asked for that to be on.
The Open Meetings Act Remote Participation. Commissioner Scott?
Well, it was a, a resolution that, uh, Scoville County put out in that correspondence we had last meeting. And I think that we should back that up with our own.
When's our emergency order and?
December thirty-first.
And, and I understand, I understand the reluctance because that there's a possibility that somebody can go on vacation and, and abuse that, but I think that's an exception to the rule. Uh, you could, you could very well be in, I, I, myself, I could be in the hospital for something. And I, I don't want to be in the hospital, but be in there and, but then I could participate in the meeting, not just listen to it, but participate in the meeting by voting and everything else. If you could use the technology, Zoom. Doesn't mean that I'm going to be on vacation. I may be in a place that I don't want to be, you know? You could, Brad, you could be out of town. It's just some Walmart thing and maybe it's just another store or something like that and but be able to participate in our five-thirty meeting or something like that. And it's just, I think it's use of technology. We didn't have this Zoom ten years ago. We have it now. I mean, it's a great. We have it now. I mean, it's a great day. I think that, you know, can it be abused? Yeah, we're talking about the time card thing, just like that, you know? Can that be abused? Yeah, sure. They can still leave the building, stay within that five hundred feet, clock out, you know? Hey, be down at Dairy Queen. And that. And still punch out, you know?
But I, I just don't see the, a, a real. Need for, for this to go on past our December end date. I understand what you're saying, but, uh. I think the voters deserve for us to be here. I, I love, um, the technology, but I think it's more for people to be able to log in and watch. At the convenience of their home, uh, without having to come into every meeting, especially if there's bad weather. But I think we deserve to fulfill our duties. If we're, if we're gonna sign up for something, then we should be here.
Well, you brought a good point, bad weather.
Commissioner Sivak?
I like the idea of being able to do it via Zoom, but I also understand the concern with possible. I would rather, quite frankly, err in some caution. If you're in person, you can vote. If you're not in person, you can still zoom in on it. You just don't get a say in the vote.
That's, that's.
And that, again, my concern would be, let's say Craig and I decide to become snowbirds. Where I was elected officially. Well, I'd been saying that we were going together.
I agree. Um, that was.
The potential is there for abuse. You could take off for three months, go to Florida and, you know, I, we're not doing our constituents any service by doing that.
When you sign up for this.
I agree a wholeheartedly.
When you sign up for this.
That's why I would rather just say, you know what?
Let's have this end twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Agree, you can listen, you can put in, into it, but I think some things can be missed. A very important discussion can be missed by Zoom. Um, it's only two meetings a month that, uh, that we vote. Um, I think when we sign up for this job, I, I think that, uh, needs to be taken very, very seriously. Of course, there are gonna be things that happen and if they happen, they happen. But very rare, um, does that happen?
Okay.
So that's.
It's, it'll only be a resolution to the state government to make the change. This doesn't, we're not voting to extend our.
This is conversation.
This ends December thirty-first until the governor or the state legislature changes it.
This is conversation about that resolution that we got. Commissioner Vaughn, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, like Mr. Scott was saying, th- this is just a resolution to, uh, send to the state and. See which way they're gonna go with this. Um, they may not go with it and we're not out anything. I think we can put the effort into that.
So we got two that want the rela- resolution and three that say no, correct? Am I wrong on that, Commissioner Sivak?
I. We don't know what the state, if, if the state ends up doing that. Would each, again, this is, thinking out loud, there's not gonna be an answer to this. Would each county board of commissioners then have the opportunity to opt in or opt out? I guess is the question.
Yes, that's what we.
That's what was.
You know, then I'd be in favor of. If it allows each board of commissioners to individually opt in or opt out, if they were to do this, then I would be in favor of sending the resolution.
So the question is right now, are you in favor of sending a resolution supporting this?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
I guess that gives us three. So. I guess you lost me.
I bet.
You asked me somewhere, but.
No, I bet, I bet, because I don't want to see this board. If, if it came, if, if it comes to fruition, we're into law, I will vote no, vote to opt out of that option. But I would like to take and give other counties the opportunity to do it if they so choose.
But making a resolution means that we, so that wouldn't make sense.
Supporting, we're supporting them.
Writing a resolution means that you support this.
Yes.
But then if it comes to the table, you're not gonna support what you're recommending. That makes no sense.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
I, I guess, explain it because I, I don't understand.
I support.
I'm asking Commissioner Sivak.
Why support legalizing drinking at twenty years old?
Again, I appreciate this, but I'm, I'm asking him just to explain this.
Best.
So you want a resolution?
I would like to see the resolution forward to the state of Michigan and support to this.
Okay.
What resolution though?
That was a resolution to support amending the Open Meetings Act to allow the continued use.
Use of Zoom.
Continue using Zoom, but.
By commissioners and participating in the meeting and voting.
It was, it was.
Now, do you support actually being able to vote too or just participate?
I support the idea of allowing each county board of commissioners to make their own decision.
So then why don't we put, make that a resolution?
That's a different.
I don't disagree with you there.
Then change the resolution to say that.
I, I'm asking you.
I mean, that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming. I would like to see each county board of commissioners.
Be able to make that decision.
Be able to take it independently, decide what's best for them.
That's fair.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Right, I'll tweak that a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know.
The municipalities, because that's where it, it would be counties, township, villages and cities all encompassed.
And, and quite frankly, there's some, some boards that I sit on. That if they're not allowed to vote via Zoom. They fall under the umbrella of Ogumah County, so they are, you know, using Zoom right now.
Yep.
And we wouldn't have quorums.
Well, there's some committees.
You know.
Committees and, uh, and, and townships that they barely have any attendance at all.
Well, I, I specifically.
They do something like that because no one's there to watch them anyway.
I don't know what Ron's situation is with E nine one one, but there's been times with EMS, if we weren't able to take and, and do Zoom, we wouldn't have a quorum. You know? And if this thing falls by the wayside.
NEMCA was very similar.
You know, and the same thing was, I, I, District Health. I don't know if District Health falls under the umbrella of all four counties involved in it, but there's a ton of, you know, Zoom participation. Because you've got people in Harrisville, you've got them in Mayo, you've got them in Towas and.
I agree with that.
You know, so I mean, there's.
After December thirty.
I agree with that.
After December thirty-first, we're still gonna be able to use Zoom. And as commissioners, we can be involved in it, but you cannot vote.
I agree with that. I agree.
We'll still be able to, like Ron being on here, he just won't be able to vote, right?
Right. With that, remember this, it's a, to add one more complication to this, this is all happening under that emergency declaration.
Right.
Right now, what this would do is eliminate that requirement for the emergency declaration and just allow it as a matter of practice. Uh, under the emergency declaration, if the county had not proved that, none of these other agencies would be able to meet by Zoom.
Right.
So it kind of was a.
Make this important.
Component. Well. I mean, I don't know that we need to necessarily dive into it that deeply with this resolution, but is that your intent? If, if the county decides yes, then everybody can. If the county decides no, then nobody can.
Just one, one thing to add on to that. Um, a- and I do think that there, you're, you're right in some aspects. There are committees and, 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 uh, boards that are so far apart, like the Northern Michigan, uh, Commissioners Association. Where it makes sense to do things via Zoom. I mean, you don't want to drive a hundred miles to meet somebody in Gaylord. So I, I do, I do think that that's important, but, um, if you're in your own township, your own county, I think it's important to make your medians. But I, I would, I would sign on for something like that.
We have time. This isn't until December thirty-first.
And it's literally up to the legislature.
Yeah.
Take it out and bring the last time I looked at like little interest.
Okay, anything else? Agreement for MSU extension, oh, I'm sorry, blanket signature resolution to Ogumah Transit. Come on up, Ray. Sorry.
I almost fell asleep.
Make it more exciting.
I don't hear that well. I'm just roar of this air conditioning unit. I, I heard about half of what you were saying and I'm not buying hearing aids, so. I'm gonna stand.
Let's just stand.
Better when I'm standing.
You're good, Ray. Go ahead.
We have another master, um, agreement and it's for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. I sent the, I sent the agreement to Tim. There's a whole bunch of boilerplate information and a page after page after page. I think on page twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Counting each page as you're scrolling through it is the true signing document that one of you will sign. Other than that, it's all boilerplate. There is another document that I gave to Brick. That in the past. The. The county clerk has signed it. And I kind of got a call in to, to my, um, lady in M dot to find out if that's still the case or not, because there's some. And some of it that I read, it says that you have to have a, your signature on file, electronic signature on file. So I don't know if Brick will have to get her signature on file with M dot. You know, I don't really know that at this point.
That blanket signature resolution that you gave us, not the contract of M dot. Uh, looks like that's trying to identify who's gonna be authorized.
Exactly.
Says in that boilerplate, the chair and the vice chair, which I suggest would probably be the best. For, for that, rather than putting the clerk on the spot with something she may or may not know anything about, there, shut that off for you, so. But that way, I, it would be consistent with the board rules too, if we just kept it the way that boilerplate reads now.
So if you, I, I didn't bring another copy of that, could you? So it does state on here, which I, I believe could be changed a little bit. It does state that the undersigned duly qualified board secretary, so who is the board secretary of the Ogumah County Board of Commissioners? There you go. So. So that's what I said. I, I got a call, I called her today, left a message, so she hasn't gotten back with me. I will clarify that though, before, um. Next week.
That's just.
I do have the correct date on that.
That's, that's the certification though. That, that's just like, um, uh, getting a, a resolution that's authenticated in the clerk's office with a seal on it. The clerk will sign off saying this is an authentic copy. Uh, the document itself though gets into, um, stating who, you know, specifically. And, uh, or is it?
This is chairman.
Yeah, right.
Chairman and or vice chairman.
So that's the individual be signing the other document.
Exactly.
Grant agreements. And that's the signature you want on file or whatever it is they call that, which I believe we do now.
Right, and that, but then I, I need to send both of these documents to M dot, so with your electronic signature. You will send it to M dot and Tim will forward a copy to me so I have it for my files and the other I will scan and send, so.
You'll let me know?
As far as.
You're gonna send it to me and then I will electronically sign it?
I sent it to Tim. I can send it. You should have gotten it.
I did not.
Yeah, what we've been doing is you've been signing it, um.
Backsend it back to you.
Sending it to me and then I go in and punch your name on the form and it, it goes.
Yeah, because you should have gotten it, really, it's. No?
Tim will get it to me.
Well, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
When's the deadline?
Soon as possible.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
M, M dot is everything is, it says right on it. I don't know if you read it on, on the, on the email ASAP. They're.
I saw that.
So far behind the eight ball on everything that. Um, so I dated that, um, for the next board meeting, so which would be the fourteenth.
Okay.
So that'll work.
So we have to pass the resolution and then I'll sign it, correct?
Pass the resolution for you to sign it and then we will authorize you to sign it.
Perfect.
So.
And then I'll sign it, Ray.
Ray initially.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ray.
Any other questions or can I go home?
I think you're good. Thank you. We got, uh, agreement for MSU Extension Services.
You have the agreement. The language is, uh, virtually the same as last year with one exception. They have worked in a two percent increase. Uh, so the total agreement is seventy-seven thousand nine thirteen. This is paid for out of the millage.
Any questions? This is just an annual?
Yeah.
I don't have any question, any questions, guys? Commissioner Scott?
I think we should reassess what office space they really have to have. I'd like the administrators to reassess what they really have to have, because COVID sure taught us a lot of lessons about. What it is. We've had these discussions in the past and when, when we're looking at the millage and things like that. We provide more space than any other counties that they're in. And that doesn't automatically mean that we get more services than everybody else, so. So, and, uh. If they don't need that much space, then, you know. Maybe we can utilize it for something else.
Do you know anybody that needs space right now that's actively looking or you?
No.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just asking if there's somebody that is in need of more space.
I don't know. Uh, uh, Jeff Nichols is kind of squeezed in his little area there and. The building department also is squeezed a little bit down there. Ryan expressed that he'd like to have a window, but I told him, well, that, that I don't know for sure.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes, uh, go down there and assess the situation and see how everybody's doing and.
Yeah, we, we gotta look at some upkeep on that building too. That has been some time now. They wanted some things done, so anyways, okay.
Yeah, I know that, you know, before it, it was like such a need, but COVID showed us that we don't need as much.
We'll put that on for a resolution. Um, H Secretary Job Description. We've got H one and H two. We got the sheriff and the corrections. Do you guys want to come up? Do you have anything to add?
Just, it was pretty straightforward. It's, um, for the secretaries. Just trying to get in line.
So is there, I, I read through these. They look fairly similar. Is there a reason for, for these two job descriptions? Is, is it?
Well, we don't have.
Understandable. Okay.
So everybody knows what their job duties are.
Okay.
I've been cracking the whip on these guys too.
Okay.
We first talked about it in February.
That's about that.
You guys have one second, I'm sorry.
No.
Is there one secretary in each location?
Correct.
Okay. Anything to add? Anything?
Under the sectors or sheriff, it shows, so. Containing the travel expenses of the transport division is, isn't transport division corrections?
That relates though to the petty cash. They pay it out of the petty cash with the transport.
So then there's no petty cash at the corrections?
They don't keep petty cash over there just because of the.
Criminal element.
I don't know who was that or they didn't want that aspect of that.
When you get petty cash on one place, it's easier to manage.
Oh, I agree.
In two different places.
I agree.
So it's.
That's kept it the same from the sheriff's office, the transport has, they have the ability to take that to the, the secretary at the sheriff's office, turn in their receipt. Get reimbursed in cash and that's documented in that. That's been the past practice.
Oh, yes.
So.
Did both your secretaries have an opportunity to look at this? Did they?
They've not seen it yet.
No.
Going to, they both compiled a list of way back when, like February, when we were first talking about it. About their different functions that they were currently performing. So I had one from each of what they did in each of their respective positions to. Assist with making this document, so.
Oh, good. So they had input then?
Yeah, there was copies from both of them, but.
And it's been vetted by county attorneys.
There, there is cash that is. Moved in both offices, so.
There is, yes, but there's cash related to.
But not petty.
Not petty cash.
So this is two more job descriptions done. How many more we got left? So like, are your new individuals coming in? There's job descriptions, there's, right?
And the SOPs, their job descriptions. In the SOPs, there are job descriptions built in the SOPs from the sheriff all the way down to road deputy. Um, the secretary was never added in the SOPs for whatever reason. So this was one that was missed. In corrections, there are some SOPs that address uh job descriptions. I've not deep dived. Uh, SOPs in the jail quite yet to see if, like, Cooks is the one I'm thinking of next.
That's what I.
Well, that was my question with these new hires coming in, which you guys are actively hiring and recruiting, verifying that they have job descriptions for these new positions going forward.
We could um just kind of officials out of your SOPs and put them in this format and keep them with all the job descriptions too. You have duplicate, but that'd probably be helpful just in terms of where we keep these and then we know they're. A checkbox next to those titles and and know that we have them.
We could do that. The job description started sheriff, under sheriff, lieutenant, sergeants.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're all in the SOP with the descriptions underneath them. So. I could take out those pages and get it to the attorney to vest them.
Sure. Let me know cuz I I wanna have a consistent format for all of them and.
Boilerplate again like this.
That's that's it.
Is so use this boilerplate across the board.
This is safety for the county. If if you have a new hire and there's a job description and they're not fulfilling these duties, I mean, that protects us. I would think about these new hires is gonna hopefully happen in the near future.
Well, with the new hires too, we set them down and they have to review SOPs from start to finish. And then we are now requiring the signature acknowledging that they've.
Read it.
Review and understand and. So but that would just be another level. I guess like Tim said, it had them all universal as far as job descriptions. So they're acknowledged there too. So I can see that.
Absolutely.
I can.
This isn't gonna be a surprise, anybody.
It shouldn't be. I mean, it's been exp, I mean, it's been discussed since February and it was brought up again in the not recent past. So.
Now, as we make these job um descriptions and instructions, SOPs. Are we collecting these and and saving them electronically as well?
Job descriptions for sure. The SOPs are maintained in the sheriff's office and as much as you can. Keep them electronic. I'm sure you are. I I don't haven't physically seen where are you store those? I don't know if they're electronic or not.
Yes, they are electronic. They're all electronic. Uh, I have the the copy that I do revisions and masters and then it's locked and put on to. The department wide and so that everyone has access or can access it at any time. So.
That's awesome.
Good question. So we need to put this, these two on for a resolution at the next meeting as well, correct?
Great.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Every everybody's got a job description in sheriff's department.
No, he's working on it.
They are in the SOP. In the SOPs, there are job descriptions in the SOPs.
Those exactly.
So is that different? I I don't know your language, obviously. That SOP, is that different than this job description? Than what you're gonna see in the SOP? Is it two separate job descriptions?
No, it will be the same. They shouldn't mirror each other. It should be the the exact same thing, have the same content. So. Just in theory, I'd be taking that SOP that's in the SOP and then just formatting it differently into this boilerplate. So it's gonna have the same content of the expectations of that position.
Right.
Okay.
That's already in place and.
Or format consistency.
Yeah, that's what he just suggested. So I I think all I'm really gonna be doing is just taking what's currently there in place.
Based.
Formatting it into this scenario and.
If it needs to be revised, now's a good time to do it.
Right.
Everything needs to be revised.
Well, and I did add during the last revision, I added the detective lieutenant job description. And so I tweaked it for that because that was not existent back until this current makeup. So now there's job description for a detective lieutenant position and a detective sergeant if anything. So. The next, let's say, when the detective lieutenant retires, we don't necessarily have to put the next detective at lieutenant position. He can start detective sergeant move up. Down the road. So.
Just another safety for us. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Next, we have something you added, the community corrections grant.
Right. Commissioner Vaughn sent this email uh this morning forward to this. And uh gist of it is the state has not approved enough uh funding in their grant program to allow this program to continue in its current format. And you can see that the number one item that was suggested here is that the board chair sign an email to the state manager. Can state that we no longer approve the grant as offered and that in fact, we're rejecting the grant. Uh, reading further, there are a couple of um employees that we have are not really employees, but contract workers. Who have, in light of this, already resigned the positions and Joe Jan, Joe. Duje, Joe Jean uh went through and uh listed a number of other um uh services that we just will will not be able to provide based on the funding that was uh. Uh, proposed by the state. Now, the board chair can certainly. Sign a letter or send an email or anything but cannot act independent of the board. So the board. Uh, would have to actually say, yes, this is what we want the chair to do. Uh, I would suggest, though, in this case, that we actually formalize that in the form of a resolution and we can actually send that to the state as well, saying that we. Uh, understand that you're not funding and we are um uh regret your decision. Uh, this, I think, was a decent program. It's unfortunate the direction it's gone. Uh, but we did write in our um appropriation resolution that when grant funds don't come in, we don't continue. So that's consistent with what we've said as well. Uh, but I think it'd be more powerful if it came in the form of a resolution from the board, sent that uh to the state. Go ahead.
Do you have anything to add to it? Sheriff, uh, this directly impacts corrections, correct? No? Um, if we don't offer this program, I mean, I I don't know much about it, but. Could this then in the future hurt our opportunity to to get any type of of funding?
I think Commissioner Vaughn might be more apt to speak to that. Um, I don't think so. I think what has happened in the past is that there've been um proportionate allocations stalled. And so the the proportion allocation issue's been cut in half. It looks like everybody. Uh, but I could be wrong and would defer to Commissioner Vaughn.
Commissioner Vaughn, do you want to add to this?
Right, um. Well, from what I understand from the email, cuz I got the same issue being I'm down here in Florida, um. It's like they had a pretty good discussion. They kind of brainstormed trying to figure out. How they could maintain what they have in um at that funding level. Um, just wasn't gonna work. So from what I got out of the email, um. For right now, because it's a dual county, we work with Aranac County and that. Uh, I think you've seen Sergeant Bedore. Uh, was one that stepped away. He was basically the lead down there in Aranac County. Um. You know, again, not to change the subject, but back to your Zoom thing. Uh. Again, a dual county, we're, you know, some people had to Zoom in order to make the meeting to get a quorum and uh sometimes that was pretty tough. But uh there uh sounds like for now, they're they're gonna stop it. What it does is there's two or three different uh. Uh, classes. Um, I can't think right off the top of my head. But anyway, these classes. Uh, are for the inmates, certain inmates was part of their um. Oh, what I want to call it. They had to, they had to do it. They had to do it in order to uh. Get some time off. If they went to the classes and and passed the classes, they could get uh some time off through the judge. Um, upstairs there, Judge Noble. And uh, so it's it's gonna take that away from the, that away from the inmates. And uh some of their, some of their learning. We had to do away with the um. The educational part because of grants uh better than a year ago. Um, and this is just some other classes that uh we had there. So now it sounds like uh for now, it's gonna be done.
Question. This has a, it's had a fund balance at the end of twenty twenty. Of ninety-eight forty-three and it's projected fund balance of five thousand at the end of twenty twenty-one. Is this money we have to give back? I don't know.
Hopefully, we can continue the program until it depletes.
We could. Well, we just spend it. Yeah. Do we just spend it? Give it, give it people and wages?
It was a grant that paid us upon reimbursement of expenditures that were submitted to the state. So I would spend that five thousand. You probably have to pay it back.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a reimbursement. You had to expend the dollars first, report it to the state, wait for reimbursement back. So it should be a zero fund balance.
Okay, so you're gonna drop a resolution? Any other questions? Uh, the final item, Secretary for Administrator. Commissioner Becker?
Yes. I believe that um. As hard as Tim is working in that office, um trying to accomplish a lot of things, um. There are definitely a lot of things to be done. I think it's time that we um talk about putting a secretary in that office to help him. Lot of uh, a lot of job descriptions to get at, a lot of uh policies that need to be reviewed. Um, I think we're not really benefiting from um his skill set when he is spending a great amount of his time on clerical duties. So uh, that's what I would uh like to pursue.
I would wholeheartedly agree with you.
Are you pursuing, like, are you looking at a part-time? Are you, what's your thoughts? What's what's Tim? Tim, do you have thoughts here?
I I don't think it matters the number of hours you assign cuz they will be filled. No, I.
He'll take anything.
Standard thirty-four hours or whatever or whatever. I don't know.
I've been hesitant to um uh make the proposal, but um. You know, particularly the last three months, we have done a lot in terms of, for instance, with our negotiations with five contracts and there are amendments to that and. A lot of back and forth that probably uh you didn't get the most value out of me as I'm typing those things up. Uh, so definitely, um, you know, in issues like that, uh, would come into play. Uh, we talked about job descriptions. We've talked about uh RFPs for job descriptions. Uh. A lot of things like that, putting together the material for the meetings uh is a good example and uh having all that set up. Uh, definitely would free up a lot of my time to get back on things like the ORV ordinance, uh, for instance, and, you know, get those a little bit more timely. Uh, out there. So um that, uh, no, no question in my mind that if there, the position were available, it would definitely be used.
Have you ever had a secretary in your past administrator?
My last job, I actually had uh two deputy controllers and a secretary. And of course, a lot of direct reports to like an HR office to sign stuff to. So, yeah, definitely I have.
What's a deputy what?
Deputy controller, second assistant to to my job. But fifteen hundred employees, you tend to have a few more that way. Yeah. Uh, but yeah, definitely. And it's um, you know, it's it's a discipline to know what to delegate and what not to. And it's more the discipline knowing what to delegate. Uh, when you're used to doing it, but I don't think I'd have any problem transitioning.
So you'd be in favor of this?
Oh, I wouldn't. I wouldn't turn it down.
Okay, discussion.
So I or we agree. We need to.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, you've heard me. I've already asked that we take a look at outside companies to help us with. Uh, uh, job descriptions, things like that. Uh. You've heard me talk about the time we spent on negotiations. Uh, five different contracts. There's been a lot of things. We put off this ORV ordinance now for. Really, three months.
At least.
And there's been, there's been two or three other things that we've put off. Over and over again. Uh, we tackle them as we get them, but we have found out that we're way behind on. The county is way behind on a lot of things. On the numbers, we found out in certain departments uh that we we were behind. We are mending those things, but the administrator, uh, it's just, just having administrators, we've found all these things. We're coming in now, now the next, the next big thing that's happening is our annual audit. We're going, because the books are now closed for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Not quite.
Not quite, but they're they're closing.
Yeah.
They'll be closed, what, at the end of this month? At first, no, we go on. We say they're closed. And and we need to really stay on top of that. And the administrator needs to stay on top of that.
It would definitely help with internal controls.
And and as soon as that's done, there'll be another major thing coming up. We'll know. We'll just know there is.
Commissioner Vaughn, did you, did you have anything?
Well, definitely see all the work that Tim does and all the stuff that he puts out there for us. Uh, I think he definitely needs somebody uh full-time in there to help him.
Commissioner Becker?
I mean, I just think there's so many different things that they could be helping him with. Um, you know, fact-finding, researching, uh. Putting together reports. Um, I mean, he can be diving into, you know, a lot more projects and um. You know, with regard or with uh, an example would be our 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 master plan, um, our our future.
Strategic.
Strategic plan. Um, those are all things that need to get worked on and it's not gonna get done if he's constantly putting meeting agendas together for us.
Putting fires out.
Putting fires out.
So what are you guys proposing?
I'd like to hear your.
I did. I said it would significantly help internal controls significantly. You know, whether or not we need full time to start off that, you know, I kind of up on the air about. Um. I I agree. There are things that we continue to put off and put off and put off. Um, but he is only one person and he's also got a lot of communication coming in from townships with questions and. Individual constituents and and um you've had, you've been thrown a lot of things.
Pitching him, I'll keep him.
You do. You do. And we greatly appreciate that. You've been a huge benefit. Um. I I I agree hot, wholeheartedly. Now, whether or not a full-time position that that only you can answer what you need and how much that is going to benefit uh the county.
Yeah, I'm I'm dead serious when I say whatever hours you want to throw at it, they will all be used.
What hours are are, do we have budget-wise?
I would have to get into the budget and manipulate it to make this work.
Can you let us know?
Oh, yeah.
Cuz I think that's the bottom line.
I have ideas already, so.
Correct? We have.
We're, we're already in tax of the law and fun. You know, it's not, there's no more money to be. To manufacture. I mean, unless we we do shave something here and there from the three to forty-two to nine business, but you know, um. I think that. I think that we could still stand that four-year plan to uh to get away from that tax of all these. Because he doesn't have the time to investigate the ways to find more additional funding because he's tied up for putting out fires.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, there's, there's so many grant opportunities out there. We're not even, we don't even have a chance to look at, time to look at. You know, now we're standing on this harpa thing.
Well, there's just more and more restrictions with that, this pandemic, and this pandemic unfortunately is not gonna end anytime soon. Um, there's more and more restrictions. So. More and more research to be done. Townships are asking a lot of questions. Um, looking for some insights. So I, if you think we can find forty hours.
Well, thirty-five.
Okay.
Like the steelworkers.
Okay.
Agreement.
That will have to be put out. That'll be, have to be posted and. Yes.
Totally.
You have to have a job description and.
Do you have a resolution for the position first?
Pardon me?
We have to make a resolution for the position first. Uh, maybe the, I've got through the budget changes and then.
Nonunion, it would be confidential.
So you'll do that, Tim?
The thing you want it.
Before Thursday afternoon.
We're not asking for much, you know?
I expect that email at three o'clock and that's the last. And there's always stuff. Oh, Thursday's a morning meeting, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Until you change it, it is.
I I deserve that.
I I think uh you you got what, another what, two, for two weeks, three weeks to get through the last of the negotiation negotiations and then you could probably figure this out?
Well, we're kind of.
A more detailed outline by in two weeks for next county meeting.
Okay.
We'll see an outline of it. We'll see an outline of it better, maybe, maybe some.
Yeah, I like that better.
Okay.
Gives you a chance to take a breath or two.
Yeah, just one or two.
Putting out fires, we go start a couple.
Okay. Are you, are we good with that? That's gonna be on the agenda for next meeting, our next committee law.
Yeah.
The public comment, final public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
I have something. If we could go back to the time clock, um, I just wanna let you guys know what, when Tim said it was about five thousand dollars, I grabbed a quote. And um, out of that, uh, sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty-three, that's for the first year and includes everything, um, including the annual maintenance. Our annual fee for this will basically be nine thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. That's between the eight thousand five hundred and thirty-eight for their services of the hosting of all the, the data. And then there's a eleven hundred and eighty dollars for the annual software and hardware maintenance.
So, Tim, is this like a contract? We're gonna have to, for so long?
Yep. We'll have a twelve month. For the first year.
So it'll be an annual contract?
Correct.
So is it gonna be something like every, every three to five years, we have to go through and update everything and it's gonna cost us sixteen thousand dollars again or?
I would think not. I think that basically we would really maybe only update the clocks. And there's only two of them and they're a thousand apiece. I would think that they're, we're paying for their software maintenance. Um, for eleven hundred and eighty dollars, they shouldn't, that should include any updates or anything. We shouldn't have to spend a substantial amount for anything more than our upfront costs.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the phone? Make a motion to adjourn. We have a motion with support to adjourn. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion is adjourned at six thirty-two. Thanks, guys.